We'll call the meeting of this planning commission to order this July 13, 2022. If staff can call roll, please.
Ryan Pearson.
Here.
Paul Wegeman.
Present.
Brian Parsons.
Here.
Robert Estrada.
Here.
Philip Combs. Is not here yet, and Lynn Larson is excused. Don Daniels.
Here.
Chair, you do have court.
Thank you so much. Before us, we have the minutes of July 6, 2022, looking for a motion.
I make a motion, we accept the minutes as presented or written.
Mr. Wegeman made a motion first. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I'll go to Mr. Parsons seconded on the minutes of July 6, 2022. Is there any changes or comments to the minutes? Seeing or hearing none? All those in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Hearing none, minutes passed as written for July 6, 2022. Thank you. Any changes to our agenda tonight? Thank you. At this time, I'll open public comment. And anyone wishing to speak before the fellow commissioners, you're willing to do so. And I see no one that's signed up and no one in our audience tonight. Do we have anyone online? Great, so we'll close the public comment period at this time. Still different than last week. Okay, so next we'll move to public hearing of the downtown subarea plan biennial review. Ms. Tiffany.
So, the city has issued an agreement for the biennial review of your subarea plan, associated development regulations, and planned action ordinance. Third, the ordinance is that adopted in 2018. Every two years, the city council has directed that they will review the plan, the planned action ordinance and development regulations located in the city's municipal town center. And there are a number of items and reasons why this review occurs. So first of all, making sure that the downtown code influence and its regulations, and amending them if needed to improve that content, meaning what's the problem. Second, making sure that development that does occur is consistent with the plan. As well as the assumptions in the planned action, environmental impact statement. Third, making sure that the impacts of development and required regulations, actions are all still accurate up to date. And then fourth, looking at the transportation. There have been now two of these reviews done by the city in 2020. Because it was less than 18 months old at that point, it was recommended, the planning commission recommended it ultimately to be moved down. This year, the city had recommended to do the planning commission that had, due now to COVID and slowdown in the economy and development results, that no change is substantively, substantively taken. However, there are some suggested amendments to when future reviews might be. So on July 6, a week ago, there were a number of things reviewed which you as a commission, transportation, parking open space improvements, the sale of the Lakewood Town Center to a new property home, the contaminated right property status in the Lakewood Town Center. Private project updates, transportation education fee updates, and then suggested. So, as was stated just a few moments ago, the idea here is not from the city, but these two, making the amendments that are substantive to any of the code, the planned action, or the plan itself, but instead to look at timing of future reviews. Because the 2024 full periodic review of the comprehensive plan is happening in 2024, the city is recommending that this review be rolled into that process. That is, under the law, so very comprehensive part of the planning. And this is just. Everyone involved. And then after that, after the 24 timeframe, looking at instead of a two-year cycle, it would be a higher cycle. However, if something were to come up more time-sensitive than that five-year review, then that could be rolled into the annual.
Yes, Mr. Wegeman.
I just, on my little watch, Mr. Combs is trying to get in, he can't find a link. Sorry to interrupt.
Okay, no worries.
And I just was told by Ms. Brunel that, yes, I've been talking to us in the room and no one else, so my apologies. In summary for the public, what we're doing this evening is having a public hearing on the downtown subarea plan. And what you see here in the bottom of this screen is a summary of the recommendations to the commission from the city, changing the timing, but no substantive changes to, excuse me, the plan, the development regulations, or the planned action statement. So with that, I'll stop sharing. I will let in Mr. Combs, and turn it back over to you, Mr. Chair, for the hearing.
Great, thank you so much. So at this time, we're going to open up the public hearing tonight on the downtown subarea plan biennial review. And so we'll open it up, and we do not have a list of people here to sign up, since we have an empty building here, and empty seats. So do we have anyone online that is wishing to speak under the public hearing for this?
No, Mr. Chair, we do not.
Oh, this makes it real easy. We'll close the public hearing at this time on the downtown subarea plan biennial review. We'll close that public hearing. Thank you. So we move right now to unfinished business. The discussion regarding the downtown subarea plan biennial review.
And so, Mr. Chair, this is just an opportunity for the planning commission to have a conversation among themselves. If there's any changes you would like to have considered next week as you are scheduled to take action on this, any amendments, or if you have anything else you'd like to ask of staff prior to next week's meeting.
Okay, so you're saying that we do have a draft resolution on our package as well? If the fellow commissioners, we don't have any questions or concerns, we could make that recommendation tonight?
If you are ready to do so, yes.
Okay, so no problem. So do anyone have any comments or concerns? Question, Mr. Wegeman?
I just have one question. Since the new owners in there, what's their feeling? Is any feedback about, you know, we wanted to do joint commercial residential in that area? And, you know, we thought about reducing some of the parking to have, you know, a park or those outdoor areas. Any feat, you know, I guess we have to be careful asking this in a public meeting, but, you know, are they, are they thinking along those lines, or is it going to be a fight?
I don't think it will be a fight. Last December, I want to say, is when the, the sale actually occurred. And RPAI, who had been the owners for a long time, sold the whole complex here, the whole town center, to Kite Realty. They met with the city last December. They had people come out to see the site right as they were making the purchase. And also, since then, our economic development manager, Becky Newton, has been speaking to them regularly. They are very receptive to these ideas. They agree that there's too much open asphalt throughout the area. The traffic patterns don't make 100% sense. They are open to the ideas of a park, whether it be a big city park or just more green space throughout. And they are also talking to Ms. Newton right now about figuring out which mixed use or residential developers they might be able to work with to look at some sites within the town center for that as well. So the, at this point, it's a, it's a wonderful relationship. And actually, Ms. Newton and I have a meeting scheduled on the 21st of this month with representatives who will be out here again.
Is, I guess my last question on that, is there any hope or chance of a grant or something to, to do, like the park area and that? I, I mean, I mean, so you go down by the Colonial Center in that area where, you know, they got the Gary Oaks down there. That's really a nice little park area. So, you know, that's the kind of area that we need for people to be able to sit on a, in the evening and drink their coffee or whatever they're going to do. But if we could make something in the, in the town center area like that, that makes sense to me. So is, is there a chance of grants to do something like that?
There may well be grants. There's also ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act funds, at this, the local, this county, and the state level that could be used for a variety of government services projects. And actually, the city council has mentioned the Central Park as one thing they may want to use, the remaining, or some of the remaining funds that the city has for that purpose. The idea continues to have it be located right across basically the street from City Hall, I think I'm pointing the right way, and the Hops and Drops Restaurant. But there is a chance of anywhere between a two-acre to a four-acre size. And so it really, the cost, of course, and then the funding needed would depend on the amount per acre that we're going to have to be paying.
Yeah, I, you know, I mean, you got restaurants and stuff. The other thing that would be interesting to me is, you know, we're gradually going to get that walkway around.
The Green Loop.
gravelly lake, you know, so that's really nice. But would it be possible to consider, you know, some kind of walk around this, this property, you know, where the mall is going to be? Because if you start having residential people in there, then they need a place to walk their dogs and themselves, and, you know, that starts making sense to me.
If you recall, in the downtown plan itself, the Green Street Loop includes basically up, is this 59th right here? The, the roundabout and then down toward that street is part of the loop, meaning it would be greened up. And also, at least one of the private streets within the complex of the town center is proposed to become a public road. And so if and when that happens, then the design standards could be imposed where you've got additional greenery and maybe benches, what have you.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Mr. Estrada.
If I recall, the construction or helping the Pierce County Library system find a building was part of the comprehensive plan. Can you give us an update on what is happening at this time?
In terms of the library location?
Yes.
Well, within the downtown area, I believe at one point there was conversation to have it up by Colonial Center. I don't know if it would be a new freestanding structure, if it would go into an existing mall space or something like that. The temporary location, I believe, is going to be within the town center for however long that would be how the library functioned. I am not aware of any purchase and sale agreement conversations or anything like that that the district may be having. But I know that, again, our economic development manager, as well as the city manager, are working closely with the library district.
And Mr. Estrada, I'll say that I know there's been a committee of the public, you know, of the Pierce County Library here, having some suggestions, ideas. And I think that it might be either met just last week or going to have another meeting next week. So it is, you know, scheduled to have this committee come with ideas. And I've heard some of the ideas and suggestions, so who knows how it's going to pan out. It's a lot of money to, you know, rebuild that, you know, kind of modernize that current building. I heard something like, you know, they might sell it for $3 million, but it's going to take, you know, $2 million to even tear it down, you know? So it's, it's pretty crazy, and they don't need that much, you know, square footage either. It's kind of, so anyway, I think that should be continued for that committee to, go, Mr. Wegeman?
Well, you know, I don't want to do all the planning or for the mall area. But what I, the one thing that I'm seeing now, you know, went to Applebee's the other night for dinner, and some of those things, that parking on that particular area gets a little bit crowded at this point in time, you know? So when, when we do things, I, I know we have more, it appears we have more parking than we need, but it's all kind of in the wrong places. And so when we rethink about how that's going to be done, or whoever's going to design that, we, it'd be nice to have better parking so that people have access.
Yeah, it's just, I was just coming through that way by Starbucks and down at the light, and people trying to make a left hand from the light, making a left-hand turn into the shopping center where Applebee's, and it just backed up 10 cars. Someone's going to now coming out and trying to make a left, and so people are trying to make a left, they're trying to make a left. Traffic's backed up, so it's, it's a congested, congested area, especially at this time of night.
We've got space. I, I mean, it appears we have space, and so, you know, how do we think through that? But it could be an area that I would like to get my hand up on and say, hey, let's look at that.
Yeah.
And it's a balancing act between the covenants and restrictions that are on the area of the town center, based on the current occupants and the contract they signed with previewed, previous owners that now carry over under Kite. However, I will say again, Kite is at this point very receptive to ideas. They seem very willing to work and redesign town center over time. And they are open to the idea of the mixed use and the residential coming in.
Great, so no other comments or concerns? If it is fellow commissioners, we do have a resolution, a proposed resolution in front of us. Do we want to?
Would you like a motion? I'll make a motion, we forward to the council this resolution with concurrence of the planning commission.
Anyone, Mr. Wegeman made a motion. We have the resolution before us, the 2022-05 is what that resolution is to. You know, I can read it afterwards, but you want me to read it now, or I'll do it after? We have a motion. Mr. Pearson, second. Any discussion what the resolution is? It's a resolution of the Lakewood Planning Commission recommending the fermentation of the, of the downtown subarea plan, Development Code, Lakewood Municipal Code Title 18B, and Plan Action as adopted in ordinance 695 and 696, and recommending amendments to the review schedule of the downtown subarea plan Development Code, Lakewood Municipal Code, Code Title 18B, and Plan Action as adopted in ordinance 695 and 696. So any discussions? Hearing or seeing none? All those in favor by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Hearing none? We'll pass that resolution off. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
One last thing for next week.
That's right.
Okay, now we have another discussion regarding the tree preservation code update. And we have Ms. Brunel on the phone.
Yeah, good evening.
Thank you, welcome.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the commission. I first do want to acknowledge both Alex and Lisa, who are present this evening. Looking ahead, we are scheduled next week to have the planning commission take action via resolution on a revised code. During that meeting, I will be available to present the final recommendations and any changes that you'd like to see. But Alex and Lisa are unavailable to attend that meeting. So with that, please feel free to ask us questions as we go through our presentation. Most of what we have tonight is repetitive at this point. There are a few points of clarification and some information on what the administration of a urban forestry program may look like if the planning commission chose to adopt that as part of your resolution. With that, I'm going to quickly share my screen. Again, in advance of next week's meeting, we really wanted to bring this forward again for you to review before we shape that proposed resolution. Included in your packet is a brief background, including all of the public outreach that we have done to date. Most recently, the public hearing for the tree preservation code amendments was held on July 6, last Wednesday, at 7:00 PM. The meeting minutes prepared for this evening included a summary of the comments that we received during that public hearing, and a complete list of comments received in advance of the cutoff time, which was June 30 at noon, was forwarded to the commission and posted online on July 1. During the public hearing, there were many references made to the ad hoc committee recommendations. Specifically, individuals spoke in support of those, those committee recommendations. And what we wanted to do as part of this memo is clarify that during the first four, or first four glances that the planning commission had of these revised edits, you made some changes. And so with that, we have prepared on pages 13 through 16, a chart that summarizes the existing code versus the ad hoc committee recommendations, and again, the planning commission recommendations to date. We are happy to review this more in depth later, if you would like. But for now, we really wanted to focus our presentation on what your questions were after the public hearing.
Great.
The majority of what we heard from you after the public hearing, again, surrounded on a tree inventory and establishment of the urban tree program. This topic has come, come up before during those first four glances that you've had at the revisions. But we wanted to provide you with a little more detail of what it might look cost-wise to administer such a program, and what we would be looking for for an initial work plan, should you choose to forward that recommendation onto the city council. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Alex, who's going to prepare, or provide that presentation, beginning on page 18 of your packet.
Great, thank you, Courtney. And if you just want to keep that pulled up, we can just do it that way. Great. So, yep, as Courtney said, we're just going to do a quick run-through of what the urban forestry program would look like for Lakewood, should that be the route that you all decide to go. It would be a great next step for, to ensure that the tree preservation efforts are given the resources needed to protect and grow the tree canopy. And it's important to recognize that this process of updating the tree preservation code has accomplished a great amount of the legwork needed to set up a program. So if adopted, some of the code, the proposed code changes before you today would create additional processes that would demand more staff time. So with that, we've prepared a short list of initial steps to keep that momentum going that we already have. So first, it's recommended that the city continues to measure, maintain, and update its urban forestry data. And first, with canopy data, as we covered in our past meetings, we conducted a tree canopy assessment as part of this process. And that provided data on how much of Lakewood is covered by tree canopy and where that canopy is just distributed throughout the city. Canopy assessments provide insight for the city on current conditions, but also sets you up for a future benchmarking and comparisons so that you can track changes. Five years is a reasonable amount of time to see change, although data is becoming much more accessible and cost-effective for more frequent analysis. But five years is typically what we recommend. So moving on to inventory. Tree inventory gathers information about the trees, such as their species, size, condition, and many other factors that aren't gathered in a canopy analysis, just because of the nature of the data. It's more boots-on-the-ground inventorying. So with the tree inventory, the city can plan strategically and prioritize maintenance cycles for city-owned trees, which is what a lot of cities are most interested in doing with tree inventory data. So as a result, Planet Geo's Director of Field Services helped to provide cost estimates and timelines for the various levels of tree inventorying in Lakewood. For a public tree inventory, this is the standard type of inventory that most municipalities are most interested in. And that is because these are the trees that the city maintains. These are the city's trees in parks and in the public right-of-way. So a street tree inventory was estimated to be, that it would be about 20,000 trees, and it would take about three months to complete for $80,000. And then for the park tree inventory, it was estimated to be 2,000 trees would take about one month and $8,000. And for private tree inventorying, you can see that this quickly becomes a much larger scope. As we know from the canopy assessment, the majority of trees are located on private property. So additionally, property owners would need to give consent for access to their properties, which can take a lot of time, and in some cases, it's just not possible. So there are many obstacles that come into play with a private tree inventory, but it's not impossible to conduct a smaller scope. And so that's what we did explore. So the options that we have lined, outlined here, the first one is for all trees on residential property, because we know that most of the trees throughout the city are located on residential property. This was estimated to be about 150,000 trees. It would take about 10 months and cost about $470,000. And then to do just oak trees on residential property, because oaks obviously are of major concern for the city, this was estimated to be about 50,000 trees and take about six months for $280,000. And then oaks on residential, commercial, and industrial was estimated to be about 70,000 trees, take about eight months and $375,000. So you can see that these different options would cover different scopes, but this was important to outline so that we knew what the options were going forward. There is another option that is listed on the bottom of the page there, and this is for a tree count that is based on aerial imagery. And this is really an amazing feat of technology. Nobody would be on boots-on-the-ground actually counting trees. This is done with satellite and aerial imagery. And this option provides tree locations, a total count of trees, and the approximate crown size. But it's important to specify that this does not track any species information. So this would not get to the level of, is this an oak tree? Is this a pine tree? Anything like that? So again, in developing an urban forestry program for the city, both tree canopy assessments and tree inventories provide really valuable data sets. And those would be managed within an urban forest program. So moving on to.
What, excuse me, Alex, Mr. Estrada had a question.
Sure.
Alex, regarding your third listing there, oak trees greater than six inches on residential, industrial, and commercial property. So why only oak trees on industrial and commercial? Why would they, we go to all trees?
This would greatly increase the price, and it is something that we could, you know, approximate. But if you can imagine, it would probably get closer to the million-dollar mark based on the fact that it would be all trees on residential, industrial, and commercial properties. And it would take a great amount of time as well. But if that is something that you would like some estimates for, we can absolutely provide that.
Would we, wouldn't we be selling ourselves short by not looking at all trees? I mean, not counting the cost, which, because we do have to count. But still, how many trees are we going to miss if we don't count all trees on commercial, industrial?
Sure, sure. And it's just that when a data set becomes that large, sometimes it's more efficient to do a sampling so that you can make assumptions based on the total amount of trees within the sample. We could do, you know, a combination of the satellite image analysis, so you get a total count of trees, and then the, maybe all trees on a select amount of properties throughout the city. But really, it was just for efficiency's sake that we proposed these options.
Okay, Alex, one minute. I see, I see Mr. Pearson has a question as well.
Yep, so I see on here that it's oak trees over six inches. And, you know, if we're talking about reducing that down to four inches for significant trees, I mean, this number is going to go up and the cost is going to go up, and it already seems like it's pretty insane compared to the, you know, the, doing it with technology is like, you know, nearly free. So that, to me, is just, it almost seems like an automatic just to do the, you know, using technology and saving, you know, I don't know, a million-plus dollars on counting trees and stuff to get close enough, maybe. So that, to me, is just kind of like what, what stands out here. And so that's pretty incredible, if it only take less than a month and just a handful of thousand dollars to, you know, to, to get us on the right track with something decent that we can work with. So I think, you know, as far as bang for the buck, I'm kind of a bang-for-the-buck person, and that seems like a good deal, so.
Any other questions? I do, and I agree with Mr. Pearson that for, you know, under $5,000, a starting point to count trees. And then in future, maybe moving along and seeing if we can narrow it down. But that seems like a no-brainer is to include that part in here to get started with some count of this technology. 5,000, yeah. Well, that's what I say is if, if it is 5,000, if it turns out to be 500,000, then that might be a different story. But for this estimate now, that sounds pretty, pretty reasonable. Mr. Wegeman?
I agree with you both on that. I mean, I look at those big dollars. I mean, certainly, data is very important to try and make decisions. But, you know, for the amount of dollars we spend here, to me, I would want to spend some of this money trying to get our nursery together that. I would want to spend some of this money trying to get our nursery together that starts having replacement trees. Start doing things on the positive side instead of spending it all here counting. You know, we do have accountants in our midst, you know, and they like to count things. But it's awful expensive and to me, just an aerial photo can give us a whole lot of information and that's pretty, I would think, pretty cheap.
Great. Okay, that sounds good. And Courtney, did you, you had your hand up, but chance everyone?
I'll reserve my comment on that for later.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Alex, continue on.
Okay, great. Thank you. So, um, yep, we'll move on to the next step and that is to grow Lakewood's tree canopy. And because this is something that would be managed within an urban forestry program. We covered the tree canopy analysis and the canopy goals exercises in previous presentations. And the planning commission did have great discussion on these topics. So I'm not going to go into too much detail here, but just wanted to say that we provided a comparison of the tree canopy data with, um, available planting area and compared that with socioeconomic and demographic data that led to the composite map that you see at the bottom of the page here. And this map highlights the recommended census block groups to prioritize when considering future projects for growing the tree canopy. And that kind of leads into the next piece that an urban forestry program would manage the implementation of any actions having to do with reaching a canopy goal that may be set by the city. So with the baseline canopy goal that we discussed of thirty percent, that would, we would recommend that a strategic plan is put together to prioritize those census blocks that were identified as part of the equity exercise. And, um, that would require some additional staff time to incorporate these goals into the common, the practices of the city. A canopy goal of thirty five percent or forty percent would require, would require uh, many additional resources and a more robust program. And, um, that is something that could be outlined, uh, for the city as well. And that would-
Yes, sorry. Tiffany?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, just a comment here that, uh, if you could go back up this page to the maps. On a number of other topics, we've been talking about many of these areas of the city, right? So Tillicum Lake, sorry, Oak Brook, Tillicum, Springbrook, Lakeview and off to the eastern side of the city. Are areas of focus for a number of different reasons. And so the potential for funding might be more than just looking for climate change types of grants. There may be other things that could also help fund activities in these areas over time. It's just something to keep in the back of your mind.
Thank you. Okay, Alex.
Okay, great. Um, so then with, um, with the thought of, you know, we have canopy goals and then how do we achieve canopy goals? Part of, um, the planning exercise is that, uh, tree giveaway program is an engaging way to increase tree canopy on, um, private property, which is where there is a lot of land area available for planting. And, um, this is a, a program like this would be managed by an urban forestry program. And, um, these are successful programs that are listed here that are common throughout the country. This is sort of the bridge of how you get from their city operations and there's, um, public tree management that can happen within the city. Operations on the, on the municipal side of things, but this is how you bridge over into the, um, private property. And so this would be proposed as a tree giveaway for private property, which would also do public education to make sure that people are choosing the right tree for the right place on their property so that they don't have to cut it down in 10 years when it's growing under power lines, things like that. And, and that there's more engagement involved in this. So this would be something that's managed by an urban forestry program. And would be helpful to have an arborist involved in the pro- process. So, um, as part of the, um, city tree funds, there, there are funds there and there would be additional funds potentially coming in from any future code changes to the processes of, um, that we've outlined in the red lines. And, um, and then lastly here, um, to grow capacity for an urban forestry program. It, as we've stated many times, it would, um, take additional staff time. And so what we've done is outline some of the salary ranges that are standard, um, for the city operation so that you can see what one full time employee in the planning department would, um, be for the city and then one contracted city arborist as well. So with that, I will hand it to Courtney and available for questions on that part.
Great, thank you. One thing, Mr. Wegeman, before Courtney?
Oh.
Go ahead.
Go before Courtney?
No, yeah, go ahead.
The, the, the tree giveaway program, I, I certainly think that's a good idea, but the thing I've, and it was covered here in the next one, you know, was the, the, the full time employee would do, help do some training. And I think people, you know, knowing what are the, the, the bad things, in our public hearing, somebody talked about Ivy killing trees from the bottom. So how do we, how do we train our fellow citizens about the right things to do about maintaining their trees? And so somewhere that training needs to be. And then if we do have trees to give away, you know, people get one and they plant it in the wrong place. That doesn't make sense to me. So I think if, it, this needs to be an integrated program from my perspective to make it work.
All right, great. Mr., um, Courtney?
Thank you. So turning back over to what our next steps would be. We do currently have a city tree fund that has just over sixty thousand dollars. And part of the red lines, um, proposed includes that any operational costs to administer the tree fund or to administer the tree preservation code may be able to pull from this fund. In addition, we are expecting about four hundred thousand dollars in deposits over the next year. There is one very, that sounds like a very large amount, and it is. There is one very large project that was recently permitted and the mitigation fees associated with that project were just over four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It has not yet been finalized. Um, in this instance, there was a priority Oregon white oak woodland identified on site. And so that was what led to the, um, high mitigation. So with that, um, additional revenue likely would be required or generated via tree permit costs. Um, specifically, as we've mentioned in the past, there is currently no cost for any tree removal permit regardless of project type and size. So while it does make sense certainly to can, continue to administer a residential tree permit program at no cost, since that will be a new permit type. And hopefully will require little to no staff review for those administrative more notification type permits. Perhaps for some of the larger projects, um, industrial, commercial developments that do take quite a bit of staff time and review. We may consider including some type of cost recovery model as part of that. Right now, the city department, um, the development services department operates on an eighty percent cost recovery basis. And so depending on how the council wanted to move forward, we would propose likely having some type of true removal permit. For, again, those larger projects. So for next steps, um, at your next meeting, you will have a draft resolution presented. At this point, we, if you wanted to move forward with developing an urban forestry program, we would include that as part of the resolution to the city council. I heard from, um, Commissioner Wegeman that adding to what the work plan may be for such a program would be the public outreach and education component, which is very important. So we can certainly add that here. And then, um, circling back to what another question that was posed after the public hearing. One commissioner asked where additional canopy would be focused. And I think Alex did a great job of kind of summarizing that it would make sense to try to offer additional incentives, um, as well as, you know, this tree replacement program in those areas that we've identified as needing additional trees. So with that, we're proposing a new option for you tonight to consider, which is to establish as part of your resolution or include as part of your resolution, um, that we amend the policy in the comprehensive plan to include equity as a possible planting area as well as potentially establish that urban forestry program.
Ms. Burnell? It came to my attention after I, um, listened to the public hearing on YouTube and then a couple of other meetings I've been in. There is a, the wildlife, um, I don't know what it's called, Reserve over on, off Phillips. That, um, there is several nonprofits that have been, um, working over there. I understand that they've, uh, over the years, since Washington state owns that property, but they're allowing these nonprofits or the group that is taking charge to revitalize that area. That there was, um, some oak trees planted over the years and they have a, they call the stand. So there's so, and there is quite a bit of land over there where there is an area where possibly that could be a area to replant. If the, if the private party couldn't come up with an area, that could be an area. It's a big swath of property. And, um, some of the people on the ad hoc committee, uh, have talked, I have talked to, and, um, they're also on the parks, um, board as well, one, one individual. And, uh, that might be an area that we can kind of partner with or designate that could possibly have an area to plant some trees. So I just thought I'd bring that up, um, since this last meeting. And you were just talking about having a designated area or some areas that possibly could be an area.
Great. Um, thank you for that. And it also reminded me of another point that, um, I have had a couple of nonprofits reach out to me, Tacoma Tree Foundation, our local, um, tree foundation, the Audubon Society, saying that they would be interested in partnering with such a program for replanting trees as well as potentially offering some funds for a, a replacement program or a, um, giveaway program for trees. Tacoma Tree Foundation specifically already has something like that, though their volume isn't, isn't too high. They'd love to see it increase.
Great.
Lots of opportunities for partnerships.
Okay, great.
Um, just really quickly, there were a couple of other questions that I wanted to go over that we received afterwards. During the public comments, there were several calls to request that the city, um, certify that those who were moving the trees or the arborists removing trees were licensed. And right now I just wanted to confirm that we do require licensing for any contractor that works in the city of Lakewood. That is both state licensing as well as city licensing. And so our staff is already very well trained in making sure that using the proper certification websites, as well as the state licensing system, everyone has the certifications they need in order to be able to, to meet our code requirements. And so we would continue to have that best practice, um, for tree removals. The next one was regarding violations being issued to both contractors and property owners. I did copy in here exactly what the red lines say and underline for you, um, that we do currently have in the red lines that both the property owner and hired contractor would be subject to fines and penalties. And then, um, the development standard for impervious surface. This was an additional development on standard incentive that we hadn't addressed, but we decided to include in the red light version. And, um, the option that we suggested was to allow potential two or five percent, I believe in the actual red lines, we plugged in five percent of additional impervious surface coverage for optimal tree protection, um, and with standards. It's ensuring that that impervious surface doesn't go into our critical root zone, which would already be protected and continue to be protected under the code. Lastly, um, for the definition of critical area, it was requested that we consider alternatives to designating an individual tree as a critical area. And so what staff would like to pose as a suggestion is that you consider keeping the code as, um, the proposed revision outlines, which is that an individual tree may be considered a critical area or is a critical area because it aligns with the Department of Fish and Wildlife's definition of critical areas. If the diameter is very large, so twenty inches or greater. In those categories, we recommend rather than removing it entirely, considering having an opt out option where essentially it's a critical area unless you can prove to us otherwise. So you hire a certified arborist or a habitat biologist that essentially says this is not a critical area. It does not provide priority habitat and species or, um, priority habitat for priority species. And at that point, we would remove it from the requirements outlined in the critical areas ordinance. So just another thing to consider, um, it is still certainly up for your, you know, selection and we can make those changes per your recommendations to the red lines prior to our next meeting. So for recommendations, um, for now, we, we plugged in a couple of summary recommendations based off of the items that I just discussed, which would be to create an additional incentive specific to impervious surface coverage, allowing for up to five percent additional. And then the critical areas ordinance to allow an applicant to opt out of being a critical area for those individual or single trees. And then the new policy of the comp plan under LU sixty to indicate that the tree canopy is, um, informed by equity and those possible planting areas. And then recommend the establishment of an open forestry program. So with that, Chair, I turn it back to you and we are happy to answer any questions.
Great. Courtney, um, I do have a question is at the very beginning, we talked about, the public hearing and many of the individuals that came up, just say the canopy goal, number one, the key issue, number one. Everyone, not everyone, ninety percent of all the, uh, public comment were, they referred back to the ad hoc committee always at forty percent, forty percent, forty percent. They, they kept on saying that and really didn't even address what the other options of thirty percent. So in my impression, they kept on, everyone that was kept on coming up was saying they liked the ad hoc, ad hoc, ad hoc. And they really didn't address specifically to the planning commission, you know, options of lowering some of these things. That was my impression and what I heard. I don't know if that's what other commissioners heard or, or if yourself, staff and everyone else heard those same kind of-
I definitely took note of that. Um, and one thing that I will say is that we, we did make several attempts to connect with the public in order to present the red lines as drafted by the planning commission. We had those posted online at the end of June and we also actually held a YouTube, um, tree talk meeting during the day that individuals were welcome to come and attend. And then we posted that to YouTube afterwards and linked it to all of our associated websites for folks to be able to tune in and see and have us describe and discuss exactly what it was that the planning commission was presenting. So in, in terms of the comments that were received, I will say that I also noted that, which we thought would be helpful for any of those folks that are maybe tuning in tonight or will in the future, say that what you have recommended thus far does not align directly with all of the ad hoc committee recommendations, which is hopefully what this table helps to illustrate.
Yeah, this, this, um, um, key, you know, considerations of, you know, current policy, ad hoc, and then planning commission, that does help out significantly, but I'm glad that you concur that that's kind of what I kept on hearing and I thought, oh my goodness.
One thing I should note is we did clarify towards the end of the meeting, uh, we, Ms. Burnell did that for us of, you know, it's not forty percent, it is thirty percent for recommendations. So we did throw that out there during the meeting. Um, it was towards the end, but there weren't any further comments on it.
Sure, yeah, no question. Mr. Pearson?
Yeah. So I'm, I'm interested in the single tree critical area. So is that, that's in, that's a definition from WDFW? Is that where this is coming from?
Yes.
It's not like, is it a state, like, is it a, is it a requirement from ecology or any other? I mean, it's just in their definitions?
It is not a requirement. So right now, the way that the, um, the management recommendations for priority oak woodlands defines a priority oak woodland is, um, I can pull up the exact definition, but to summarize, it basically says an individual tree or a grove. And then it gives defining measures for those categories. And for an individual tree, it would be a tree that is, uh, offers priority habitat to one of the priority habitats or species that are listed elsewhere, um, through fish and wildlife or has a large diameter base height. Large diameter breast height or base height is, um, twenty inches as defined later on in those management recommendations. So in the appeal hearings that we've received over the past year, this has been a point of contention. Most recently though, I do want to point out that the hearing examiner did acknowledge and is in the RCW. There's a little bit of a contradiction, but in one section of the RCW, it does say that cities are allowed to establish our own priority. Our, our own priorities and our own definition. There is another portion of the RCW that says that we should use best available science. Now, the management recommendations were most recently updated in nineteen ninety-eight. So there is a lot more of- a lot more available science. We're a little ahead of the game, which I think Darren Masters with Fish and Wildlife would acknowledge and say they are currently making efforts to update those definitions and the management recommendations specifically in areas like Lakewood in urban settings. Most of the management recommendations are specific to Eastern Washington where you've seen large amounts of canopy, greater than an acre. We don't have very many of those here in the city. So in the city, critical areas, it's most likely that we would see individual oaks being impacted or stands of oaks, again, with that la, large average diameter of breast height of over 20 inches.
Thanks. And then, so are there, are there other jurisdictions that have this critical area? Or would be, would we be, oh, it is, it's common?
Yes. So Pierce County, I have not done a comprehensive look at all of them. Lisa may have additional ideas of all of the cities because she's done a lot of the cross referencing. But I know Oak Harbor does look at individual trees, Pierce County looks at individual trees, and I believe Olympia and DuPont do as well. Lisa, do you recall?
Yes, Oak Harbor, Pierce County, and I believe Olympia. I'm not certain on DuPont.
Thanks. I just, you know, it, I don't know, it, I, there's a lot of them around the city and, you know, there's, it's, it's probably more common to see, you know, just a single 20-inch tree, oak, one of these oak trees than it is a stand of them or a couple of them on a, on a property. And so I just am, you know, would perceive with caution with how many critical areas we're creating potentially by, you know, moving to this. There's a bunch of oak trees around the city and, I mean, it's a good thing to try to protect them, but it's also, you know, I, things aren't getting easier to develop. It's getting much more difficult. And so I just, yeah, would want to just perceive with caution. So, thank you.
Mr. Combs?
Yeah, I would echo the, the sentiment of Mr. Pearson. I, I think that if we're going to proceed with that, I, I like your recommendation. If we're going to, if we're going to leave the single one as a stand, we certainly want this amendment in there, in my mind. And, and so I think the question is, do we let the single one stand? Just because that's the state guide, as you noted, isn't the, isn't the one all standard and some cities don't even have, haven't even considered this whole concept. So I think I'm still a big fan of getting this on the board, but I'm a little anxious about doing too many things that are, there's a lot of unknown territory for us and a lot of unproven things. You know, we've got a lot of ideas, but not a lot of history behind it, right? You know, even the tree donation program is still relatively new for every one of those cities. And so you can't even measure the canopy growth because there's no history on it. And that's not to say they're not a great idea. I'm glad to see those things go out. But I, I do think every time we've got a program that requires ongoing management and money going into it, let's evaluate it. Is there a better way we can spend the money if it's not working is all. And so I definitely want to see results from that. I want to see, you know, I want to see us hit canopy goals and, and beat them to the extent that it is not damaging property and hurting our, our system. And I've, I've heard all that feedback. My thoughts on the recommendations, I like number one. Number two, I would agree with if we do continue with that, although I, I would, I would suggest that we revise it to not include a single stand, just a, a single stand as a, or a single oak as a critical habitat, as Mr. Pearson recommended. That would be my, I would second that motion if that were what we were making right now. The, the third one, amend the new policy and I, I, this one's still a little unclear to me. With the data we have above and way this is worded right here, I'm not sure that this third recommendation completely makes sense to have, be informed by equity. I don't even know exactly what that means. And so I think that I'm, I'm good with the areas we discussed. I just don't know that I want to put in language that we're not sure exactly how this is going to transpire, what it means, and don't want to have questions on what the definition is later and why it's there. I know that equity is something that came up and I had some questions about it before in comments. I don't think we've heard about it since that day. And so I think I would leave this one alone. But if we were to do something where it's based on equity, I think we might consider adding that Tillicum neighborhood into that plan because it's not in there now. And based off of what Ms. Spear was saying, that would probably be to our benefit to include as many of those impacted areas that aren't showing. Am I right in saying that, that Tillicum's not included in that? Okay. And then the last one, recommend the establishment of an urban forestry. Is, is everything that's established by the urban forestry what we've discussed here so far, which is basically a tree giveaway and a canopy goal, and then the, then the survey of the, of all this? Is that, is that fair to say? Or is there more to it that I'm missing?
So for what staff came up with briefly, not having put in the full work that would go into creating a work.
Right, right.
Is that an urban forestry department would identify areas in need of additional canopy. We've already begun that work. Work with a consultant to complete a seat, a city tree inventory. And these are things that I could see happening in the first year, or first couple of years after the program's established. Establishing a tree replacement program or giveaway program, I will let you know that this is already something that we are actively looking into, how the city may be able to administer such a program. Work with the city's contract arborist to review tree removal applications. Let's say that we did do that opt-out option. Part of that would include the city being able to hire an arborist or a biologist to confirm whatever the data was that was presented by the applicant. And then to monitor the city's canopy goal, which is something that could take shape in a lot of different ways, but would be another responsibility of that type of a, a program and, and separate division in the city.
Assuming we're able to pare this down so it's a manageable thing, and I love the idea of using the data that's more readily available. Certainly don't agree with spending a million dollars on the whole kit and caboodle today. I think that there's a lot of other places we could spend that money and have a more immediate impact. And, and especially if you get all that data, what are you going to do with it? By the time you figure out what you're going to do with it, all of that needs to be updated anyways, which would be five years from, no, no offense, but that's just, that's a lot of data. And so we would probably, I think, taking bite-sized chunks makes a lot more sense. I think it's manageable approach. And so getting that going. I, I like this. Those are my comments on the changes I would make. I, I remember there are some reservations on the cost of having an arborist or having this whole urban forestry program together. And, and is this separate from having just a staff member dedicated to it, which is what I thought we were discussing? Or is that what that staff member would be doing is becoming that urban forestry program?
That is what that staff member would be doing is we would be recommending hiring an additional staff member in order to head the urban forestry program, as well as having an arborist on contract. So there's other cities that have an arborist as part of staff. I think that it would make sense for us to look at the needs for that role before we went ahead and hired somebody. And so we would say having somebody on call that's our contract arborist to go out and do site visits as needed and review documents as needed.
Courtney, is it fair to say that the city has set aside funds for this? It seemed like that was something that, uh, Mr. Bure was suggesting before is that, hey, they're aware of this. I don't know what money's set aside and so making a recommendation to do this. I, I don't want to set this up to get shot down. I mean, it sounds to me like we were getting closer and that they were, they're aware of this, but what, what's your take on it right now since he's not here?
Um, I would say that, that it's been acknowledged and already had some line items considered and factored into a potential budget, but ultimately before any of that's presented, the hope is that this process has concluded, right? And that was part of the catalyst is acknowledging that developing a new program will take resources and is something that the council needs to select how they're going to prioritize those limited resources as part of the next, next budget cycle. So, which brings us to our timeline of having commission take action and then getting this on the city council for them to make the final decision on whether or not to establish such a program.
Thank, thank you very much and sorry to take so much time. I just want to make sure I knew what our next step is from here.
Okay, just one moment. I got some more questions. Ms. Spear, did you have a comment?
If I can remember it.
Oh, sorry.
I was just, first of all, going to say that I think the, the full-time employee that's mentioned in this program again could look, potentially could be combined with some of the climate change requirements that are actually coming forward, not only from the city's own energy and climate change chapter, but also the pending 2024 update has to comply with state law, which has also changed regarding climate change, as has regional policy. So while right now you've got Lakewood kind of on the forefront tip of the spear almost doing this sort of work, within the next couple of years, there's going to be more strongly encouraged or required climate change and greenhouse gas emissions things. So I, I think this person again might be kind of not cross-department, but cross-division duties, and so that may assist with some of the funding as well.
Okay, before, Mr. Wegman?
Yes, I have a couple of comments too. I mean, when you say urban forest, you know, we, we look at, the warehouses live right in our community. They've, they've been doing forest business for a long time. And, you know, and they have made considerable money, I think, on, on growing trees and, and providing products. And if you listen to the Washington Policy Center, they, one thing they talk about is that trees are the one renewable resource we have in our world today. So if we have an urban forest, to me, I, I don't see any place in here where we talked about harvesting trees. I, I know people that have cleared some lots and they've made considerable amount of money for those logs. But, but right now, most of us only have maybe one or two trees on our lot. So it probably isn't financially viable for us. So what ends up happening if we take the tree down, we chop it up into firewood and, and, and burn it, which puts more carbon into our, into our environment that maybe that is the right way. But certainly we could use lumber. So if, if we have these people in and we look at a harvesting thing, so we start identifying trees that maybe need to be harvested, we, we talk to commercial people like the warehouses and say, hey, who, who would we work with to log this out? Certainly in an urban area, it's going to be a little bit tougher, but from some of the stuff that I've read and seen, e, even in our forests today, they're pretty selective on how they forest. They use helicopters and those kinds of things to log and lift them out. So could we do that in our community? And then the revenue from those logs can be used to finance some of the things we're doing here. Just, just thinking out loud on that. My other comment, if, if we've done some science or have data on, on how much canopy we need, I'm just not aware of it, you know? And so that would be an area that I would be a little more interested in is, you know, is there some hard science that says 40 is good or 30 is good, or would 50 be better? I, I, and those are some areas that I'm still not clear on. As I talk to my neighbors about trees, the, the first thing they say is, wow, the city's going to stop me from cutting this tree down. It's going to cost me and I need permits. So that's where many of the citizens that I bump into, that's where they come from. Even my wife was saying, well, what's it going to cost to cut a tree down? And, you know, I said, no, we're looking at this from a holistic point of view. So we, I think we need that training as we, as we go into this area. And certainly if we have a good hard number, if we're going to go for 30%, we need every fact we can to explain why we came up with that number, I think. And then, let's see, when I look at canopy, the things I've seen in my yard, even some of my, I've got some pretty large crepe myrtles. And it, it was amazing when we get the snow, a third of my crepe myrtle got broken out just because the snow came in. And so that happens to a lot of trees. So I think we've talked about the arborists, but we need some people to think about some of these shrubs or trees. When we get a larger canopy, then it picks up a lot of snow and then the limbs come falling out. So that's not a good thing. So how do we, you know, how do we work some of those things and educate our citizens in our neighborhood about those? So those are my comments.
Mr. Parsons, no, Mr. Pearson, excuse me.
Just one comment response to Paul. I think that some of the urban forestry stuff would be a bit challenging because we're, you know, when you're out on 40 acres, 80 acres, you know, logging, you're just dropping trees and, and in the city, you're, you know, they're cutting them off two feet at a time and dropping them down below. And so you're not getting harvestable, you know, lumber. So it'd be, you know, unless you did, you know, get a helicopter in and, and start plucking them out. But I think that would be kind of challenging to do much of that work in the city. That would just be my.
I don't disagree with you. However, I mean, if we, if we're talking about urban forest, you know, can we be, think outside the box? I mean, I, I was in the business of flying airplanes off ships, right? Most people don't think that's, makes a lot of sense. But if we could make this work, if we could pull out a big log and, and, and again, I'm certainly no expert in this area. I'm just thinking that we have people like the warehouses or people in that forestry industry that could say, hey, if you did these kinds of things, you could, might make it could work. And certainly, I look at machinery when we're pouring concrete today, you know, they've got these big boom things that get concrete way back in the yards. It's certainly that we could have some kind of crane. And, and we've already hired, you know, I don't know whether they're the best tree people around, but is it Ascolan? It comes around in their orange trucks and harvest trees. But, you know, they, they probably have equipment and ideas. And, you know, we start working with our utility companies to be careful where we put our poles, you know, Bobby works with, you know, what is the light company over there? And, you know, if we think through, we might could make this work. Just, but I, but I hear you, you know, it, it's not an, it's not an easy solution.
Go ahead and, any other comments?
I forgot my other one.
Okay, I'll come back to you. Got Ms. Burnell?
Yes, and I'm quoting Alex here. So please, Alex, jump in if there's any additional information. But there are many urban lumber programs that do prioritize carbon capture and for us to reuse them locally. So that would be something else that we could include as a potential work plan item for an urban forestry department.
Okay, thank you.
And I would just add to that, that it, there are many states that are actually at the state level promoting these types of programs for community forestry and urban forestry. So it is something that is being prioritized in other states. I don't think Washington State has anything yet, but I wouldn't be surprised if something comes down the line.
Great. Thank you, Alex. Go ahead, Mr. Pearson.
So my, my only, uh, comment on, you know, it seems like we have kind of one recommendation basically that is, you know, right? I mean, kind of. And i, is there like, you know, if we update the tree code to be more restrictive and do these other things, but then maybe not have, you know, like an urban forester and, you know, is there something that we can do within our existing budget? Is that, I, I guess I just am, I'm interested to hear any comments on that. I, is there any capacity to do anything? Or is it like, no matter what we do, you're looking at some sort of an FTE or at least contract work or something?
Yes, Burnell?
Given the recommendations at this point, which specifically pertaining to removing the exemptions from residential, single-family residential laws requiring additional review for any oak tree, we're going to be looking at additional staffing. I, I would anticipate. I don't know how our current staffing levels would be able to accommodate that without sacrificing the review times for other permits.
But it might not, this is Don Daniels, it might not be the full extent of hiring or having this urban plan immediately. So in many words. of hiring or having this urban plan, um, immediately. So in many words, you know, we can leave it in there for recommendations to the council and then the council can kind of work through and massage it to say, are we going to hire a FTE for this whole urban plan or have a kind of a conjunction with climate change and that, that's their kind of expertise to massage that through the budgetary.
Up until very recently, we had a current planner on contract. So that would be probably what staff would propose if they decided not to move forward with hiring somebody full-time is that we explore an option to have another contract current planner, um, that would be specifically dedicated to reviewing tree removal permits or shift a different portion of current permit review onto that individual so that we could estimate and have good data. Right now, we don't really know what we're getting into because we've never tracked the number of tree removals on single-family residential lots. So they may choose to take a direction like that and that'll certainly be an alternative that's presented.
So is it kind of the feeling then to leave that urban recommendation in there? So they can give to Ms. Burnell kind of the, instead of, I hate to say all or nothing, you know, so to speak, but I think that realistic wise, that does make sense. And then the council can work through the budgetary of how they want that FTE and expenses. Okay, uh, any other changes on those recommendations? I know Mr. Combs made some, um, comments. Anyone else feeling of, of those, um, kind of recommendations, one, two, and three, so they can massage and come back to us with a draft resolution?
Yeah, I would second Mr. Combs' comments. So I think we're on the same page there.
Okay, yep. And I don't have any other comment on that. So you guys can, so, Mr. Wegman?
I, you know, when we went through our training on the Growth Management Act, you know, the GMA is basically a checklist of how to work through this thing. So I think, you know, this is our first cut. I think there's been a lot of work. There's been a lot of good discussion that, that's here. Um, but there's, I don't know if there's a real hundred percent clear pathway that boom, we need to spend money and we need to do this right now. I, you know, I appreciate Ryan saying, hey, you know, what, what can we do with what we have right now? And I think that's good. But I think just having this document out there so that we continue to use that as a, um, a baseline to have our discussion is becomes, is, is important from my perspective. And, and, and I guess with you, Don, I, you know, the council gets to ultimately make the decision how they spend the dollars. So we can kick the can down to them a little bit and, uh.
No, I appreciate everyone's comments and feedback. And, um, like I said, is I think there's a lot of efforts and a lot of work is on everyone with Alex and Lisa and Courtney and I mean, many, many, many hours of this. So I, I totally commend each and every one of you for all these hours that you've put in, um, to try to make this thing is, you know, is fair and is thorough. Um, and I think we've got amazing, um, you know, documents to start with this whole thing. And I think we've done some amazing, you guys have done all the amazing things. We just sit here trying to make it sound good and look good. And Mr. Combs has another comment.
I was just going to add on the last recommendation, which was recommend the establishment of an urban forestry program. I think if we're going to do this, uh, or make the recommendation to do all of these things, I don't know if that verbiage is exactly what it is, but I would just say whatever the resources are, a person dedicated to overseeing this program at whether it's an urban forestry program or something else the city wants to define it. But I, I do recommend pushing it forward with the funding a person so that we can get this started. Cause we can look at reevaluating and pulling it back off. I, I, I just don't know if we call it as urban forestry program and whatever, but, uh, I do want to approve or recommend, or recommend that we do move that forward. And so maybe you guys disagree with that one. So I'll, I'll, I'll step off again and let you guys make some comments, but I feel like, hey, we've gotten through the whole elephant. Let's not choke on the tail right now. And, and, um, if, if that's, if that's the case and everyone is on board or, you know, the city's aware of it, like Mr. Daniel said, it'll ultimately come down to the city council saying, you know, we're either ready to fund that or we're not. And if they're not, then we at least have the framework for this for future. And so, um, but I think at least based off of all this so far, we have a, a, that would be my recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Combs. Well, one thing though, um, regarding Ms. Burnell, one thing that, um, Mr. Combs mentioned at the end, that equity part, uh, any comments? I didn't think I heard any comments after Mr. Combs made a recommendation that he's not quite clear with this, that last equity verbiage.
Yes, and let me, um, actually get back.
Go ahead, Miss Spear.
While you're doing that, Courtney, I'll just throw in, um, the city council actually adopted an equity statement last summer. Uh, maybe there could be a reference to that and also just, uh, changing the wording in the proposed red line to state racial equity. Um, and or areas of historically disproportionately impacted communities, something like that. So it's a little more honed in or focused in than just the term equity. So to make it a little clearer as to what the intent is, just an idea.
I really liked Tiffany's recommendation. I think that our intention here was again, to kind of tie it in with the council's policy and just saying that the, the decisions and the prioritization would be informed by equity as we're looking at the possible planting areas. And there is data available to us, um, thanks to all of the work that Planet Geo has already done as well as the organization, um, treeequitiescore.org, right? Where we pulled all of this data from that gets updated. I'm assuming relatively regularly, Alex.
So there are no plans to update tree equity score at this time. It's just, oh, it was a one-time release.
I'm thinking, yeah. Um, so with this though, given the data that Tree Equities Core has already provided to us, we have a starting point. And I think that it's certainly, um, reasonable and would be expected that the city council, um, or staff through planning processes would identify the other areas that we've already identified as needing additional care potentially. In alignment with, as Tiffany mentioned, the other policies that have already been adopted by the city council. So we tried to keep this language pretty broad, but I really like, um, the way that Tiffany just phrased that. So we'll come back next week with a little bit of a, a scrub and a reword.
Oh, great. Thank you. I'm glad you clarified. And Mr. Wegman?
Just to add on that, um, on the equity thing, uh, I, I talked to some landlords that have rental properties. And one of the things they've learned is you, you minimize amount of shrubs, definitely minimize the amount of trees. And unfortunately, most rental properties are people that'll have a little bit lower income, uh, and they, and they really don't spend a lot of time taking care of yard maintenance. And, uh, so those are the things. And so I can see where uh, there can be certain areas of a community that has a lot of rental properties in it will have less, um, tree cover and and I can look at it from the landlord's perspective that it's, it's expensive to, to keep that up. And, and the people that are there don't necessarily let you know when there's a problem right off the bat. So that's, uh, some issues. And, and I think that's one of the issues that we as a community, if we, if we jump on board with this thing, how do you manage it? And it, it, the trees don't stop growing. They're, you know, it's, it's like trimming your fingernails. You gotta do it every couple of weeks or so. And, and that's what trees are going to do to you. So.
Great, thank you. Great. Uh, in conclusion, Ms. Burnell, is that pretty much, or Alex, is that pretty much your, what our comments were today? Have we given you enough, um, suggestions, ideas, comments?
I believe so. If you wouldn't mind, I'd like, I'd like to just summarize. So what I have heard is that overall we are happy with the red lines as currently drafted. Um, there were some recommendations that were made. First and foremost, I do want to just make sure that here on my screen, which you aren't looking at, just a second. Okay. We have this revised definition of the priority white oak tree and woodlands to include woodlands, stands and individual trees with the following definitions. It sounds like there's a desire to have us remove the individual trees and revert back to just the stands definition, including an opt-out, um, for potentially stands if there's cert, a certified arborist or a habitat biologist that um, states that they are not considered predoryo. So we will make that change. Um, we'll leave both options in case there are differing opinions. Um, in the resolution, I'll, I'll prepare two drafts since that seems to be the point that might cause the most controversy for you guys to deliberate next week. Aside from that, um, we will also be adjusting the language slightly for the comprehensive plan amendment um, revolving or involving equity. And then we will be putting an item into the resolution to in, include an urban forestry program, um, which I think goes a long way to show the city council that in addition to reviewing all of the policies, we've also spent some time reviewing how the city would practically administer such a program and the recommendations, um, that you will be providing. So Chair, as long as there's nothing else that I missed and changes that you would like to see that in this presentation.
Mr.?
I would just make one comment, uh, to staff and the consultants. You guys have done a great job and um, we started with, uh, you know, uh, yeah, quite, quite a, you know, a, a mess on the wall. And we got it down to something that I feel pretty good about sending to, uh, to council to take a look at. So I appreciate all you guys' work and I think you've done a great job.
Yes, commend as well, all of you as well. So thank you, Alex. Thank you, Lisa and Ms. Burnell. We'll see you, uh, again next week. Um, and we look forward and get this thing passed on. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we got that, uh, discussion tree, energy, climate change, chapter implementation plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I am pinch hitting for Mr. Bure this evening. He is on vacation. So bear with me and I apologize in advance if I've unable to answer one of your, or more of your questions this evening. But if you recall back on May eighteenth, Mr. Bure was here and provided you with an updated version of the implementation or work plan for the energy and climate change chapter. It was back before you a second time because when you made your recommendation to the city council earlier this year, they requested you look at it again and provide some additional direction and also maybe hone it down even further than before. So what I'm going to, um, walk through here is a summary of how, uh, the new version you saw in May eighteenth is, um, designed and then see if there's any questions or thoughts that you may have. There is now this Excel spreadsheet, which I attempted to provide in the, uh, materials for this evening, fully understanding that would have been at about two-point type. So my apologies for that. Uh, but originally there were eighty-nine action items within the energy and climate change chapter itself. And that's, that's been brought down to thirty-two items that were then incorporated into this spreadsheet and scored. If you remember, Mr. Bure looked at difficulty, priority, and then financial considerations. And then out of those three, those were all ranked on their own. And then the total number of points were added up. And so, but at the end of his analysis, he then looked at thirteen of the thirty-two totaled either ten points or more. And those were the ones that he had brought forward to you as inclusion in the initial work plan. Fully understanding that this will be looked at periodically, updated as needed. But there were, um, thirteen items that originally uh, hit that number of ten or higher. The way it looks in terms of funding, um, there was one enormous number of a hundred and twenty-five million referred to, and that is because it includes the work City of Lakewood is, uh, coordinating with Thurston County, Pierce County, and a number of other jurisdictions to expand the I-five corridor along the Nisqually Delta in order to help alleviate some of the issues related to both flooding risk, but also fish passage improvement. And they are working, um, in close contact with the Nisqually tribe. And they are working at the federal level for these funds. So if you take that number out, the total we're looking at for the rest of them is about two and a half million. And obviously funding sources would need to be identified as, as they could be from various and sundry sources in order to move forward. Um, the way this is set up schedule-wise is for you to be taking a look at this once more tonight and then taking action uh, for a second time next Wednesday. So what I did also, sorry again, wish I could get that out of your way. Here you'll see a number of items that are between twelve, I'm sorry, fourteen points and then, uh, moving on down to the ten. So I'm going to just throw them out really, really fast here. First was the climate change chapter, which was adopted already, but now it's a, it's a matter of forming partnerships with a number of agencies and utilities, um, to include Puget Sun Energy, Tacoma Power, Lakeview Light and Power, and the Sustainability Collaborative. Uh, Mr. Bure currently works with the collaborative now. Um, all of these partners though, that are listed for all of these items, these are ideas. These relationships may exist, but they aren't based on this plan. So what would happen is assuming the council, uh, takes action and adopts what the Planning Commission uh, sends to them, it would be then be this new or expanded outreach and interrelation to make sure these things then were implemented. Uh, the second item is developing a five-year plan really focused on greenhouse gas emissions. And so this is one of those things where we may be talking tree canopy in another, uh, but related venue. Updating the non-motorized transportation plan for the city, which is also, um, something that's being planned by our public works and our parks departments right now. Looking at, uh, the flood plan engineering over in Clover Creek. And if you remember, this is the Springbrook area that, um, at this point, along with I-five actually, it, on maps at least, there's a threat of flooding. Uh, and so looking at how to come up with either new berms or some other alternative analysis and, and construction to avoid that flood risk. Reviewing, uh, all of the environmental protection regulations in Title fourteen and also perhaps adding climate change into that chapter. Working with Pierce County and cities within it to come up with a regional approach to climate change. Obviously, what City of Lakewood does on its own may make a small difference, but it's not going to solve the problem. There needs to be regional as well as national work on this. But this is the idea of, of actually incorporating it into the, perhaps the countywide planning policies and moving from there. Um, the public engagement plan for climate change. On May thirteenth, when the city council and the planning commission had their joint meeting, there was that presentation by the Evans School students about the public engagement that they did for, um, how, how people in the City of Lakewood perceive climate change. And if there's anything that they might personally or the city might do to help improve the situation. Um, they also provided a recommendation of how to improve public engagement going forward. And so this is talking about incorporating those changes into how the city tries to engage with neighborhoods, with neighborhood groups and others as we implement this plan.
What minute, Mr. Combs has his hand raised.
Miss Spear, I was just looking at the agenda and what you're sharing and they are not in the same order. Which one is the more current one?
This is the one that you should be looking at. I do apologize because what is in your, um, packet did not include some of the higher point items. So this is the more accurate one that we're looking at right now.
So the ones that are twelve and above are the ones where we should be paying extra attention to right here?
Um, well, they are, I, in theory, new to you that you may have seen it in May when, um, Mr. Bure provided it, but it was not included in this week's.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Wegman?
Is it, uh, on the, the new one there, develop a public engagement plan? You, you've got the University of Washington and Evans School of Public Policy. Have we considered looking at some of the other think tanks out there? And one that I'd recommend that has a lot of good ideas in this particular area is the Washington Policy Center. And, um, I, I know they, they help both Democrats and Republicans in election time when they're looking at policy and they have some very good information that they send out. So.
The reason the, um, that Mr. Bure included Evans School is they were the ones that created the climate change plan already. So this is not suggesting that we would go back and have them do the same or something new again, but it's just who's been used so far.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Um, so moving on to the ones that were all rated at ten, incorporating environmental justice into the climate change work. And that may be the term, since we were just talking about how to fix the tree code, including environmental justice may be a way to clarify because it's, it's basically the same thing. And then you'll see over there in the partners column, second from right, a number of groups that are within Lakewood and the county, uh, that have a good, uh, strong, broad mix of individuals and ethnicities. Then there's the big huge one, the hundred and twenty-five million for, uh, the Nisqually Delta area that I mentioned before. Tree preservation code is actually included as part of this plan. Uh, then, uh, looking right, and this has begun, but hasn't really, the construction hasn't begun. Looking at reducing the use of city hall by the city from three floors to two and then. and then, uh, reducing energy consumption as a result. Not only from the redesign of where people are constantly using, uh, resources at the at the building, but also updating the building when remodeling might happen. So, um, that analysis is ongoing right now as to how the city hall use by the city may be changing. And then we'll see going forward by the end of the budget process this fall if the council's gonna move forward with that. Continuing to update the, uh, city's building code, not only in, um, re- in reaction to what the Washington State Building Council does, but also taking a look at climate change and hazards resulting from it and incorporating that into the building codes as well. And then the final one is to support and engage in the creation of an updated solid waste management plan. Number of partners are listed there. So back to the first page, you've got a fourteen point, several at twelve, three at eleven, and the rest are at ten. These are the items that Mr. Bure would suggest to you be the initial work plan. And it would be something that would be incorporated, excuse me, into a a resolution for you to take action on next week if you're ready. The last thing he wanted to make sure people were aware of, uh, there was discussion, I believe, at the May meeting about, um, electric vehicle charging stations. For whatever reason, they weren't included in the original eighty-nine items. So he's suggesting dropping that in as one more of the, um, the initial implementation plan items. So next Wednesday, if you're ready, would be taking action on a new resolution regarding this updated version of the implementation plan, and then it would move forward to the city council in August.
Great, thank you.
Happy to answer any questions.
Any comments? Nope, no comments. Man, awesome, looks good. Thank you, Ms. Spear.
Sure.
Great job. All right, we have no new business and any reports from city staff?
Uh, nope, if everything goes forward as planned though next Wednesday and you take action on those two items we discussed tonight, then you would be off on hiatus through the month of August and also the first, what would be back to our two-week schedule, the first meeting in September. So the next meeting would be September twenty-first.
Great, thank you so much. Any other comments from the fellow commissioners? I do wanna publicly, um, thank Vice Chair, Mr. Pearson, um, for proceeding over the public hearing. He did, I watched YouTube, he did a great job in handling, um, that for your first meeting. That was, uh, well done. And I'm, I was really happy that you, uh, you acknowledged everyone and thanked them for their testimony. Um, so everything was great. So good job, you you have something to look forward in your future, I believe, so. Thank you. Uh, no other comments? Then we see none, so we'll adjourn the meeting.